Good evening. Welcome to the November 24th meeting of the Aiken City Council. Earlier today, we were informed that former municipal court judge Charles Chuck Simons III passed away. He ably served our city from 1987 to 2007, and we offer our sincere condolences and prayers to his family and friends. Please rise and bow your head in a moment of silence in his memory before I give tonight's invocation. Thank you all. If you are inclined, please rise. Well, you are risen. And now we will say the invocation. Almighty God, our heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Aiken, the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. In your name we pray. Amen. Chief, would you come to the, well, the podium's not there, but come up front and lead us in the pledge?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the meeting begins, I'll review the guidelines. Meetings are public forums in which many opinions are expressed, and the business of the city must be conducted. As such, disciplined, honorable, and professional decorum is paramount. Courteous and respectful communication is required. There should be no disruptions from the floor while council members or members of the public are speaking. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized so that we can retain order as we conduct the business of the city, and all comments can be put into the record. During public hearings, all questions and statements from the public shall be directed to the chair. If you wish to speak, please raise your hand, and I will recognize you. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. In order to allow an opportunity for everyone who wishes to address council, speakers should limit their comments to the subject being discussed. Each speaker will be given five minutes to address an issue and may only address an issue once unless questions from council are posed to the speaker. During the non-agenda public comment section, each speaker has three minutes and can only speak once. We now move to additions and deletions to the agenda. For the last time, I will recognize Mayor Protem Edgerdo for this agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Why are all y'all here? It's not a very big agenda tonight. And all you new people don't get used to it, believe me. It will be bigger next time. To the new guys, I'm excited about all of you, Pete, Barbara, Braylon. Braylon is the man. That's pretty exciting, a 27-year-old running for city council and winning. We need to get younger. I mean, us old people, we have our place in all of this, but at the same time, we need to have some mixed in there, learn the ropes, and get in here and help make some changes because we are in 2025 is the last time I checked. Also, I want to recognize and thank the people who ran against the winners. Jacob, I know Jacob's here somewhere, Jacob Ellis, Kurt, not Kurt, Kent, Kent Cabbage. Sorry, Kent. I know Kent, so I can get it wrong. And then you have Clayton Clarkson and Lisa Smith. It was really interesting to have people run against them. And I ran in 2001 and lost, so I know what that feels like. And as y'all all have realized by now, the sun does come up the next morning. But give it 17 years or whatever it was, I did run and I did win, and I've been here for eight years. So, thank you for running. And all of you, you know, it's fun to say things and second-guess everybody, but yeah, put your mouth where your money is and get out there and run and get involved. It's not as easy as it might think, but it is a worthwhile cause. That said, there are no additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, and I present the agenda as a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Woltz, second the motion. All those in favor. Thank you. The minutes were provided to council for review prior to the meeting. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
I still move.
That's Councilwoman Diggs made the motion, a second from Councilwoman Price made the second. Any comments or changes? All those in favor. Thank you. Before we swear in our new, three new council members, I would like to take this time to give the floor except for Councilwoman Gerardo because he's already spoken. No, just kidding. To if you'd like to say some remarks, we would love to hear from you.
Do I have to go first? I just talked.
You got called your first.
I'm first? Yeah, I don't know why I'm nervous. I'm used to talking, obviously, but it's been fun. It's a lot different than it was eight years ago. If anybody wants to be fun, go look, unless you, have y'all taken the pictures down of us yet out there on the wall? Go look at that and look at, I'm a whole lot thinner, little older. I've got longer hair, but I don't think I have more hair. I just think it's longer from that perspective. Fifty years ago, I was a teenager in high school. In my first job, where I got a check that they took the taxes out, which that was a shock, was with the city of Aiken in the recreation department. I don't think they had anything to do with tourism back then, but I, that was my job. I was the groundskeeper for Citizens Park, which is a whole lot different now than what it was then. But I was the head groundskeeper. I was also the only groundskeeper. And I gave myself that title because I didn't like head trash picker-upper. Because that's what they hired me to do, was pick up the trash, cut a little grass, line off the baseball fields, and do that type of thing. That was my summer job for five years. I loved it. It was great. And look at me now, 50 years later, here I am saying goodbye after eight years on city council. I'm still that kid. I still think of myself when I look in the mirror as the kid who lined off baseball fields and dragged the dirt in fields. And it was, it never crossed my mind that I would be on city council. It wasn't a goal. It wasn't a dream. It's just one of those things. I went off to college and came back, and here I am. And some point, like I said, I ran and lost, and then got my second chance and was here for eight years. I have spent a lot of time thinking about the last eight years and some of the things we did. There were good things. There's some things that didn't go quite the way we expected, which everybody knows about that. But from a standpoint, it's been a very fulfilling job to serve the city and be in this position. I want to thank the staff. I'd name all of them, but we'd be here all night. But Stuart, certainly, our relationship. And again, this may come as a surprise, we don't always agree on everything, but we get through. Mary, Sarah, Lex, I'm not going to get into the heads of all the committee of the different staff members because we'll be here saying their names. But you guys, y'all mean an awful lot. And Sarah, you're amazing. Council. These guys, I love these guys. You talk about people who don't always agree. I must tell Kay, I don't need to see that every council meeting. Let's get through it. But Kay, Gail, Mayor Teddy, Andrea, Ed, two Eds are better than one. That was Ed saying, and I thought it was pretty cute, so I keep saying it, but he thought of it. And then Lessey, I would not want to have gone through this without Lessey. Her experience is incredible. Sometimes I think she's lost her mind. Thirty-eight years, and she just ran, and she's got four more. That's some amazing service to this city because this is not a get-rich-type of act. And all of us are pretty close. Sometimes you might not realize it, but we are. And I'm going to miss that. But there again, I'm just going to be across the street, and anybody can call me, come get me, and I'll be glad to come up here and talk and do all of that again. But, and, well, I do need to thank one person in particular, our former mayor, Rick Osborne. I would not be here if it wasn't for Rick constantly asking me to run and be involved. So you can take that as a good thing, bad thing. There is no finer person in the whole wide world than Rick Osborne. And I just think you need to hear that. He is a fine person, God-fearing, wonderful person, and I am honored that I call him and his family good friends, one of my best friends. So I wanted to thank Rick publicly for getting me involved in that. So that leaves you, the city of Aiken. Thank you. Thank you for being there. For, you know, sometimes we get a little testy here and there, but at the same time, all of the opposition, in part, it's important to hear that. And we can disagree. And yeah, there's sometimes where it seems like, okay, this is really tough, but that helps us grow. You new guys will get used to that because there's things where people disagree, and you need to be heard. So I appreciate all of that. And finally, without trying to get too into this, I look back at everything, the thing I'll remember is the treatment I received and the prayers and the well wishes of this community when I was having a kidney transplant. It wasn't easy, but you made it easier. And I felt the prayers. I felt the whole thing. And in a day, I knew I was better. I was going to be okay. And it was time to go back to work after the doctors looked at me constantly for weeks on end. But at any rate, thank you for that. That's what I will take from this and remember more than anything. So, thank you. God bless. And like I say, I'll be around. I'm not going to be that far away. But thank you.
Councilwoman Gregory?
No, you go ahead. You go on. Ladies first.
Thank you. You go.
Thank you, Councilman Gerardo. You know, this is a very, very important evening. I'm so excited for the new members coming onto council, Mr. Pete Messina, Mr. Braylon Waldo, and Mrs. Barbara Morgan. You know, I'm looking in this room, and there are very few people that I may not know personally. But, you know, I'm sitting here, and I'm like, wow, this is the essence of Aiken. Because one way or another, we are all interconnected. And that's special. Of course, this is bittersweet. I love my city. And we work hard. And so do you. And I'm going to sit here for a moment, and I'm going to just thank a few people. Because I want to talk about how interconnected we truly are because it's really kind of scary. You know, I'm going to start with Ed. Ed DJed my wedding over 20 years ago.
And she forgot me.
But he reminded me. I mean, that is an example of how interconnected we are. Councilwoman Broll, I worked her rehearsal dinner with Mr. Broll when I was really young, right before she got remarried. Mama Diggs, I met Mama Diggs before I ran for council and was always so inspired at her commitment to her people and her community. That's special. She represents her community like no other, no other. Gary, I mean, he's everyone's attorney. Real estate, whatever. We've been in town long enough where, you know, we've obviously, on the personal side, worked with his firm. Teddy, I'm going to tell you a quick story about Mayor Milner. When I was in college and broke, I was broke. She owned Stoplight Deli. And she was so good to me. She'd give me food. She'd feed me. Egg salad sandwiches. She makes the best. I was 17 when I came to Aiken. And she was one of the first people, adults, involved in Aiken that I had met. Fast forward, oh gosh, 30 years, 28 years. And we were remodeling our home a few years ago, and we were staying downtown until some remodeling was done. And we were staying where, the place we were staying at had a kitchenette. We didn't have a kitchen, so we were eating all over town. And Mayor Milner, I went in to get an egg salad sandwich, and she looked at me, and she said, I know you like to cook, Andrea. I know you want home-cooked meals. I'll give you the key to my store so you can come and cook and just lock it up at night. That's amazing. Stuart, I've had the pleasure to work with Stuart in the last eight years and gotten him to know him very well. One of the smartest, very detailed individuals that you guys will meet on council. You'll notice that. Lessey Price has taught me so many lessons, Councilwoman Price, on how to navigate politics, how to navigate the system. Always putting family before everything. And Ed, I've known Ed in Hollywood probably for about the same time I've known the Brolls, big community members. We don't agree much, by the way, but we agree to disagree, and we're better for it. That's what it's all about. So with that, I want to thank my colleagues because, you know, we've been in the trenches. Being in the trenches is not easy. We've handled wildlife management. I've earned, I earned a death threat over that. We've handled COVID. You've all earned a lot of backlash over that. The change in our political spectrum really took a toll on every community across the country, including Aiken. So, it's not easy. I'm not trying to scare you new guys, but, you know, we've learned that, we've learned a lot. But listening is key, listening to your constituents, listening to your community. And, you know, it takes a lot of patience. The biggest takeaway is that pride is concerned with who is right. Humility is concerned with what is right. And that's a quote from Ezra Taft Benson. And I don't think that could be more true as we embark in different leadership capacities. I see a lot of leaders in this room, leaders on this council. And we have to make sure that we're listening and we're humble. Because we are the people's messengers, and that's it. That's what we are. We don't do this for ourselves. We have to remain humble. If you remain humble, you will make the right decisions. So, Braylon, Barbara, Pete, if you do this right, you will return every phone call. Communicate using all the channels. Using all communication frameworks. And really act as the messenger for your people. I appreciate everybody being here. I appreciate everybody coming. I appreciate the support in the last eight years. And before that, you know, we've been, all been involved in our community one way or another. You know, we have to remember that conflict is good. Sometimes we lose sight of that. Civility is even better. But conflict drives change. And some people look at conflict like, you know, it's, you know, a bad thing. It drives change, and change is good. And our community needs change. But we need to make sure that that change is always in the best interest of the people. I just want to say that, Edgy, you can speak for yourself because I'm not that old.
Yeah, you know, I meant to mention that. She's not that old. She's the baby.
You know, I feel like I have to say this piece because I have a microphone in front of me, and it's my last opportunity to be as vocal as I can be about this topic. But I do want to, you know, we have accomplished a lot, great things. Oh, my gosh, the Public Safety Building, this beautiful building. This is beautiful rehab, a lot of rehabs, different projects. Our staff has been outstanding, Mary, Lex, Maria, Ms. Sarah, I don't know how you do it, Ms. Sarah, but you are a force. And every department head and everything that we've done, when we call, they answer, they respond. Stuart is one of the most responsive individuals I have ever worked with. I could be in a meeting with constituents, and they ask a question, and I message Stuart, and the response is immediate. And that makes us look good. You know what I mean? And that's the way he manages his departments. Again, not everything's rainbow and butterflies. It's not like we agree on everything, but it's been a pleasure to work with staff in the city. I want to thank my family, James, Abby, and my mother. James, Abby, and my mother-in-law are here. No offense to Mayor Milner, but I think if BG ran for mayor, she might, she might win. My mother-in-law is a stable in Aiken. James is born and raised in Aiken. My daughter Abby. The support you need from your family to accomplish these tasks is parallel. I mean, you need it. You know, you have great days, and sometimes you have tough days, but you need your family. You need your support. So much greatness, so much greatness. This experience has been life-changing, all, in a good way, in a good way. I can't really think of anything else to say except that stay vocal, stay loud, keep coming to these meetings, give your opinion, give your perspective. We need perspective. Because we can think we know one thing, but until you listen to the people, you realize, wait a minute, I didn't think about that. I didn't take this into consideration. That's a different perspective. And that's, that's what it takes. A lot of great projects and all that, but I'm gonna speak to the hotel before I hang my hat. I want to congratulate the Ingrams and the Johnstons for what they're doing at the corner of Park and Lawrence. I foresee that being an amazing project by community individuals that are vested, that believe in our community, that have been here, that contribute, that donate, that support. I'm not talking about just anything. I'm talking about millions. They believe in Aiken, and they're doing all the right things. I don't believe the Hotel Aiken project is on that track. They're not vested in our community. It's bad business. Excessive payouts. Ridiculous costs. Price tag is way too much. I ask you guys, this community, to get informed, get the details. Ask for every single specific aspect of that project and speak your mind. Because the people I've spoken to in the community, all over town, don't like it. Don't like this project. Only a few do. And we can do this better. It's been in the works for 20 years, guys. Reel it back in and do it right. Do it properly. We are not there with this project. That won't be the last time you guys see me here, except I'll be on that end, speaking about that. But be brave and be bold. Doing the right thing is hard. Not being the popular majority is not easy. That's something I've taught Abby, day in and day out. Be vocal and do what's right for you, for the community, and for the people. Ask the questions. At the end of the day, as Woodrow Wilson said, "The ear of a leader must ring with the voices of the people." God bless you. Thank you.
Me.
Councilmembers, would you like to say something?
Boy, aren't you glad you don't have to follow them up? I'm not much of a speaker, but I do want to say a few things tonight. Tonight ends 18 years of service I've done to this city. 10 on planning commission, 8 on city council. I've enjoyed all of them most of the time. There are always things that you don't agree with. And that's what makes this council good, is that we don't always have to agree to move forward. And that, over the years, has proved itself right more than one time. I appreciate the citizens of Aiken giving me their support and allowing me to sit up here. I appreciate my wife letting me do it. I appreciate her saying to me tonight, "You mean, you'd be home on a Monday night?" So, I'm looking forward to that, spending some time with her. And I, I just can't say it enough that everybody that works for the city, that whether you're driving the truck or being a public safety officer or what, they all care. I've never seen so many people work in a group that care as much as our city employees. And that, that is something that can't be said a lot. I've talked to people in other cities, and they, they have a lot more employment problems than we do. We don't have those problems. We have people who genuinely care. And I look out here tonight, and I see some of these people, some of these faces that I've seen for years. And I hear people say, "Well, it's always the same people that you're talking about." Well, it's always the same people that show up. And if you want to be heard, show up. We're glad to have you here. We're always glad when people come and voice their opinion. Again, I don't always agree, but I always listen. And I think that for anybody coming on, that's one thing you have to do. You have to listen. I really have enjoyed this. I really do think it was a great privilege that let me do this. And I thank everyone for their time in doing that. And I hope everybody has a great holiday season and a great New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, three. It's been a wonderful, wonderful two years, getting to know you and working with you.
And the food's gotten a lot better, Teddy. Thank you.
So, with that, would you all come down to the front, and I will present you with your plaques? I guess I should turn it. Yes, I'd like to, but Sarah told me not to. Andrea, this is for you. I'm allowed to take it? You better keep it in case. Yes. You have to wrap it up. Congratulations. Thank you for everything. I will miss you. This is for, it says Edward Gerardo Jr. in appreciation of your leadership, guidance, and service as Mayor Pro temp of the City of Aiken, November 23rd to November 25th.
You want me to call the question one more time?
Yes, I do.
Call the question. Let's get it over.
I'm gonna miss that.
Life and my family.
Hey, Abby. And James. And Ms. Pavlick.
Madam Mayor, if I could speak just a moment. Ed, Councilman Gerardo mentioned about two Eds being better than one, and that's, Council, there you are. And we, that was sort of a joke around council, that two Eds are better than one. But I want to tell you, my life's gonna be a little bit simpler, because I'm married to an Ed. So every time I spoke about Ed, I was asked, "Who are you referring to?" So, as much as I'll miss these two Eds, most of the time from now on, it'll be my husband, Ed, that I'm talking about. But I will miss you guys. And everyone here brings so many different talents and experience. And it's been my humble pleasure to work with each one of them. And I don't want to get sappy here, but I wish them God's blessing. Whatever they do, just know there's gonna be a crew here supporting anything that you endeavor to do. And thank you all so much. I love you.
Thank you. We are family, y'all. And most of us have been together at least eight years. Less than now, a little longer than that. But I'm gonna miss these guys. And I'm gonna miss Ed at conferences, Ed G., because every time a song came on and we were at the dance, he knew every one of them. I don't care who sung it, what year, he knew. "You know that song?"
When I didn't know the song, you actually knew it and told me. Because I asked Abby, and Abby didn't know either. She knows her music as well.
And then to have their spouses and their families part of us, that's pretty special. That's something that you don't forget. So, I'm sure we'll see each other a lot. Not as much as we see each other now, but that's okay. I know his wife will take, continue to take care of my grand dog, Ally.
That's right.
He said she'd even take her. So if you want another dog...
No, we don't need another dog.
But we are happy to have Lessey staying with us. Lessey has been the backbone of this council. And I call him my partner in crime. We spend a lot of time on the phone, just like a lot of us do. And she knows, she's my sister. And I love her. Love all these guys. Stuart, Mayor, Gary, even though he's not my attorney. We got a history, Aiken High Booster Club. And Kay and I used to be neighbors in Hounds Lake. She used to keep my children. My girls thought that her house was the place to be, because she lived on the lake. And she actually had a princess room on the bottom level. So, my girls would come home from school, and I couldn't find them. They were at her house. And I just thank y'all, all of you, for showing up and supporting us. And for the ones of you who disagreed with some of the decisions that we make, please know that we vote from our heart. And all of us love this city. We make decisions that we know are gonna impact the city. Sometime it's hard. Sometime you may not think they're good decisions, but nonetheless, that's what we voted for. So just thank you and continue to show up and share ideas with us. We get a lot of phone calls. We get a lot of emails. And we try to answer as many as we can. But if you love this city as much as we love it, let's just continue to be good to this city and be positive for some of the things that we are bringing here. Growth is not always bad. Yeah, we won't continue to be this little, small town that you may have migrated to because you thought we were gonna stand still. That's not gonna happen. So just embrace the changes that's here and the ones that are definitely about to come. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, it would be almost a travesty if I allow our councilmembers that are departing from us to leave without publicly saying, "Thank you." Thank you for your honesty, as you had conversations with me, though we all didn't always agree. We still had conversations. You have given service to the districts you represent, in addition to outside of those districts. And one of the positive things about governance and government is the fact that oftentimes someone has an issue that needs to be dealt with immediately, and someone will call outside of your district. The respect that we have for each other is, we will let each other know that I received this phone call, this needs to be handled right away, and I want to let you know I followed up on that. That is the courtesy that we respect and honor. I will continue to communicate with you. It has been a great friendship, and you've given good service, great services, many of you, to our council. I wish blessings upon you and your family. Happy Thanksgiving. I didn't get an invitation from any of you all for Thanksgiving dinner, nor did William.
Well, come on and go.
No, I'm only kidding. I wish blessings to you and your family, and my family is out here as well. So, God bless you.
God bless you.
You know, just to piggyback on what's been said, I did not say this, and I meant to. This council, our city, is better because of the people that you see serving that are departing. They, as has been expressed, made tough decisions, and the only desire of their heart was to move our city forward and do what was right. So, this city is better because of their service, in my opinion.
Thank you for saying that.
I think we have to approve the election before we leave. Unfortunately, Andrea, I think, has left the building.
Our next presentation is the Election Commission report from the November 4th, 2025 general election. Will the Chair of the Election Commission, Mr. Loftus, please come forward? Good evening.
Talk about following up on a hard act. This is, no wonder you're talking about this. Madam Mayor, City Council, administrators, and the public. We have a report here from the municipal election commission. That's not me. I'm a member of it, but it's Ed, I'm sorry, K.T. Ruffin. K.T., Sebastian Green, and myself as the spokesperson on this particular time. It's a wonderful team we put together, and we work together very well. The City of Aiken conducted a general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2025, to fill four expiring seats on the city council. The announcement of the election was made public as prescribed by law. The election was conducted under the six-one single-member district plan. The opening date for the candidates' filings for the political party primary or convention was 12 noon on July 7th, 2025. The closing date for the filing of the candidates' filings by political party primary or convention was 12 noon on July 14th. The following candidates filed properly, and their names were placed on the official ballot. Lessey B. Price for District 2, Democrat. Peter Messina, District 4, Republican. Jacob Ellis, District 4, Democrat. Kent Cabbage, District 5, Republican.
They, as has been expressed, made tough decisions, and the only desire of their heart was to move our city forward and do what was right. So this city is better because of their service, in my opinion. Thank you for saying that.
I think we have to approve the election before we leave. Unfortunately, Andrea, I think, has left the building.
Our next presentation is the Election Commission Report from the November 4th, 2025 general election. Will the Chair of the Election Commission, Mr. Loftus, please come forward? Good evening.
Talk about following up on a hard act. This is, no wonder you're talking about this. Madam Mayor, City Council, administrators, and the public. We have a report here from the Municipal Election Commission. That's not me. I'm a member of it, but it's Ed, I'm sorry, K.T. Ruffin. It's K.T. from Trump, like. K.T., Sebastian Green, and myself as the spokesperson on this particular time. It's a wonderful team we put together, and we worked together very well. The City of Aiken conducted a general election on Tuesday, November 5th, 2025, to fill four expiring seats on the city council. The announcement of the election was made public as prescribed by law. The election was conducted under the six-one single-member district plan. The opening date for the candidates' filings for the political party primary or convention was 12 noon on July 7th, 2025. The closing date for the filing of the candidates' filings by political party primary or convention was 12 noon on July 14th. The following candidates filed properly, and their names were placed on the official ballot. Lessie B. Price for District 2, Democrat. Peter Messina, District 4, Republican. Jacob Ellis, District 4, Democrat. Kent Cabbage, District 5, Republican. Braylon D. Waldo, District 5, Democrat. Barbara Morgan, District 6, Republican. Lisa Smith, District 6, Democrat. The election was held, and there were 2,728 ballots cast, and the results were as follows. Lessie B. Price, District 2, 267 votes. There were four write-ins in District 2. Peter Messina, District 4, 674 votes. Jacob Ellis, District 4, 341 votes. There were four write-ins, I'm sorry, two write-ins in the District 4. Kent Cabbage, District 5, 350 votes. Braylon D. Waldo, District 5, 362 votes. There were four write-in votes in District 5. Barbara Morgan, 468 votes for District 6. Lisa Smith, District 6, 245. There were four votes that were write-ins. I don't understand how this happens, but there were seven votes cast that were blank. That made a total of 2,728 ballots. I say congratulations to the elected officials and best wishes for the people who didn't finish first. I am proud to note that this election achieved our goals as a commission. We strive for accuracy. The system got it right, the voter list, the ballots, and the tabulation process. We strive for security. The system showed the necessary protections and resiliency to withstand any efforts to undermine the democratic process. Accessibility. The system was free of unnecessary barriers and provided every eligible citizen with a reasonable ability to vote. And credibility. Nothing occurred which would break the trust or the confidence in the accuracy, security, accessibility of the voting process. We hereby now certify the election of Lessie B. Price to District 2. Peter Messina to District 4. Braylon D. Waldo to District 5. Barbara Morgan, District 6. The end date of their term shall be for a period of four years, respectfully submitted by the Aiken Municipal Election Commission. I'm available if you have questions.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. We will now have the swearing in of the newly elected officials. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Call question.
Call the question. Makes her happy.
Do you have my motion to accept that? And a second?
I second.
Councilwoman Price and Councilman Diggs. No, all in favor. Thank you. It is unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.
Councilwoman Gregory was absent.
Now we will have the swearing in of the newly elected officials. Ms. Rideout, would you swear in the step forward to swear them in? Please? That's, she's going to stay. I'm doing them separately. I'm doing them separately. You're by yourself.
I know you've done this before. This is all about things. What do you want me to take a picture of? Okay, this is Lessie Price, District 2. So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
That as a council member of the City of Aiken.
That as a council member of the City of Aiken.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my abilities and skills.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And to carry into effect according to law.
And to carry into effect according to the law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes of which I have been elected.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the State of South Carolina and of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of South Carolina and the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, I've got one more.
Continue to raise my hand.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of this office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
The best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Peter Messina?
Next is District 4, Peter Messina. Okay, you already raised your right. Okay, I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duty of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
That as a council member of the City of Aiken.
That of a council member of the City of Aiken.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
Will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And to carry into effect.
To carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes to which I've been elected.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
And to preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Braylon Waldo.
District 5. Stand back. Is that okay? I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that as a council member of the City of Aiken.
And that as a council member of the City of Aiken.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And to carry into effect.
And to carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes of which I have been elected.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I've been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Barbara Morgan, District 6. So I guess you need to stand here, Barbara. Okay, all right. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I'm duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of the state.
According to the Constitution of the state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I have been elected.
That as a council member of the City of Aiken.
That as a council member of the City of Aiken.
I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
That I will equally, fairly, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill.
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And I will use my best endeavors.
And I will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace.
To preserve the peace.
And to carry into effect.
And to carry into effect.
According to law.
According to law.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
The purposes for which I have been elected.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
And will preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And the United States.
And the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I'm duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state.
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To exercise the duties of the office.
To which I've been elected.
To which I have been elected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
And preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of this state.
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States.
And of the United States.
So help me God.
So help me God.
That's cute. Thank you all. Congratulations. We will now take a five-minute recess.
We will now take a five-minute recess. Welcome, welcome you all, and welcome back. Our final item under presentations is appointment of a mayor pro tem. I open the floor to nominations from the council. I cannot nominate anyone.
I nominate Councilwoman Kay Brohl as mayor pro tem. The nomination.
Thank you. All those in favor? Oh, discussion, so sorry. No discussion. All those in favor? Thank you, thank you. There we go, thank you. Motion's passed for Councilwoman Kay Brohl to be our next mayor.
Thank you all, I appreciate your confidence.
We will now open the floor to public comments and non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for total of thirty minutes. Yes, sir. Yes, and then Linda, that's fine. He was waving, he'll be next.
Linda Keener, nineteen, Juniper Loop. And first I'd like to thank the council who have just left us, they won't hear. And welcome the new members, Pete and Barbara. And particularly for me being in District Five, Braylon Waldo, thank you. I did not know Braylon when this started, and I have grown to admire everything about him that he's done. And I'm proud to have you representing our district, and I am proud to call you a friend now. Thank you. This brings me, well, also, he is our first Democrat in District Five. Yay! But this brings me to another reason why I'm here tonight, and that is, I've always heard that Districts One and Two have never had a Republican councilperson. As well as Districts Three, Four, Five, and Six have never had a Democrat council until tonight. And I would like to see that changed. I give a lot of credit to Braylon for even going out on the limb and campaigning with the odds as they are against anyone with these, you know, previous history that we have. And it's very costly and time-consuming to do a campaign, and I would like to see us move to a nonpartisan elections. I think. Thank you. I think that we will see that there's a lot more people who would be interested in running if they were running in a nonpartisan election where you're not running against a party. I worked the Odell Weeks election, and I saw people, well, at the end, we, you know, had to tab it, tab up the, you know, the votes. And a number of people came in and voted straight Republican or straight Democrat. And we only had two people running in every district except for Lessie. And congratulations on having somebody come out with an unopposed. But it was a nice turnout. But I think that we would see more people interested in running if we had nonpartisan. I think that it would attract more voters. We tried everything to get voters to come out, telling them where to go, basically, you know, what they had to do, like to register, et cetera.
Thank you.
There just isn't an incentive when people are running unopposed, or we have this, you know, preconceived that only.
Thank you for your comment.
Democrats or Republicans in a certain district can make it.
Thank you for your comment.
So, is my three minutes up?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, anyway, please consider it for the next election.
Yes.
And again, Braylon, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. What a blessing it is to be here tonight, to see the transformation from what we had to what we've got. I thank God for the ones that were here, and I'm praising you guys right now because you're gonna get to see my face quite a bit. I'm here every minute, did I give my name and stuff? I don't even think I did. I'm Kurt Johnson, 114 Rooster Way. I'm the pastor of Law Sheet Ministry, and we are an outreach to the homeless, unsheltered. We go out into the woods and into places that most of, most everybody else doesn't want to go to. But we are finding success because we are doing this. We're pulling them out, and we're being able to get them their IDs into rehabs, into mental health. But it's all because we work together. The city works with us, we work for the city. We don't do this just for those people on the street, we do it to make it a better community all around. And like I said, the city has been great, and I don't think it's gonna change any because of who we got on the board. But I guess that's about it. I'm very thankful for this night tonight, and for each and every one of you. We are still seeing an influx of people coming in. We're dealing more with people coming up from the Valley and from Augusta. So if you see somebody, my, my number is out to everybody, if you don't have it, I'll make sure you get a card tonight. We are, we are dealing with a lot more than we have in the past. So I just wanted to thank you all for your, for what you've done for us, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have a question?
One question. You think that influx from Augusta and the Valley is because of the situation with Walking Tall Ministries?
It's, that's part of it, yes. And we're starting to work with some concerned citizens down there about that.
Well, it's getting ready to get cold, and you probably go see a lot more, so.
We're, we're always collecting jackets and gloves.
You're in my prayers.
That's it.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you, and Lex, Lex, you gotta come up next, I think, but for what you do, you are not only resilient, but you have a passion for what you're doing, and it's making an impact.
Well, God has given me the opportunity to do it, so, I mean, he's opening up doors for us that we didn't have. But now they're opening, and I'm just looking forward to working with the new members and the older members as well. Not that you're old, but that you've been here a minute. You'll have a blessing.
Thank you. Yes, sir, in the back. Good evening, Lex.
Good evening, Council. Lex Perry, pastor of C4 Impact Ministries, 1526 South Boundary Avenue. So, welcome, Barbara. Good evening, just to echo what Kurt has already said, you know, we are definitely seeing an influx of people coming in. I, as our ministry, we started with the Bridge Housing, it's at 316 Greenville Street Northwest. I am getting phone calls where I'm having to turn people away because we now have one space left for a female at that location. We have four spaces available at the Hatchway Bridge Road that I've told you about the last time we met. I have four spaces for females there. We are continuing to look for opportunities to repurpose different properties, landowners, developers, and so forth, trying to find this partnership. Because we're now going on eight months where we've had a successful model. It's not the only model, we look for creative ways to, more creative ways from other leaders within the community, you know, we thank, you know, New Spring Church, St. John's Methodist, Law Sheet Ministry that we work closely with, Relink.org. All of these organizations that we are working closely together to get the resources to people that need it. But we have had this model successfully working now for eight months. And, you know, we currently house eighteen people where we are now. We are seeing the transformation, we are seeing the changes, and as I've shared with you before, it takes a contact daily in order for these things to work. They have that impact on people, they have their hearts changed, because that's what's needed. It's not about throwing money at anything, we have a model that's close to self-sustaining. So there's very little that has to come in, we do need some support, obviously. The council, you have been wonderful in supporting us as we've been, you know, trying to face this challenge, and that's what it is, you know, we will win. I know, that is something, C4, as well as Law Sheet Ministry, we are committed to Aiken, First God, but to Aiken as a city, as a community, we're committed to this. It's our heart's desire to see every single person that wants to be off the street to be off the street. And I emphasize that wants to be, because it isn't a hundred percent of the people, we know that. But the vast majority of them do want to come off the street, they want a change, and we want to provide, continue to provide this opportunity. So we're gonna be looking for more creative ways where we can find housing to, to manage it for them, we believe this model works. So I'm hoping to work with all of you more closely, and, you know, I know we're coming to the end of the year, we're getting to the holidays. But for you to think about it over the holidays, not work all the time, but when you have a free moment, to just to think about new creative ways where we can work together to solve this problem, because it can be solved. But at the beginning of the year, I will be bending your ear more to find more opportunities and more places that we can repurpose in order to tackle this, because that's what it's gonna take. God bless you all.
Thank you.
Welcome for all your new council members, Godspeed. Looking forward to working with you.
Jacob?
Good evening, Council, Jacob Ellis. Good evening, Madam Mayor. I'd first like to start out by saying welcome to the new council. I look forward to being a thorn in your side like I was with the previous council. But I would also like to say two things. Running this past election cycle was one of the most rewarding experiences I've had. I ran as a joke about four years ago, but among the seven of us, I don't think there was ever a cross word, a negative attack, a slant, a slight. And with the way politics are today, it was very, very refreshing that that was what a local election turned out to be. So I'd just like to thank you all and say that. And now to my bit of bending your ear, the proposed parking garage for the hotel redevelopment. What is the security protocol, if any, for the parking garage? Because we need to have something in place before the parking garage gets built and people start to use it. Because statistically crimes happen in them, people unfortunately live in them. We need to have something in place to protect the citizens and the patrons of the parking garage. So that, that's what I'm wondering, what is the, if any, the security protocol?
Well, until a parking garage is, is greenlit, that is when the time will come to put together a security protocol, but since it has not been approved yet, there is no protocol at this point, other than, we know as public safety, checks and patrols existing properties and roadways, this will just be part of that. But other protocol, again, until we get to that point when, if it is approved, then we can begin designing appropriate protocols.
So we don't know yet if there's gonna be an open and shut time for the parking garage?
We don't know if there will be a garage approved. I mean, again, until, we, we have to get that decided first, until we can develop protocols. To use, I guess, an appropriate analogy for Aiken, we don't want to put the cart ahead of the horse.
Gotcha. Thank you, and congratulations to all new council members.
Thank you. Good evening, Jensen.
Good evening, State Council, Jensen James, 138 Florence Street Southwest. So I live out here in downtown. I will echo what many people said. To new members, welcome to council, I look forward to working with you, and I look forward to getting to know each other and every one of you. For those veterans, I won't say old, I'll say vets, thank you for sticking out and continuing to fight, to fight and being good stewards to the city of Aiken. So I actually just wanted to make sure for our new council members that you know that I work with, like Americans with Disabilities Act, to make sure that things are accessible. And I know we're doing a lot of new redevelopments and potentially garage. I just want to hold y'all accountable because, you know, we have a, you know, a mixture of old and young here in Aiken, but there are some older and some people with disabilities. So I want to make sure that that parking garage has accessible parking. On a personal note, I would love to see those stop signs that have, make noise and talk, because my wife is blind. I would love my wife and my child to be able to traverse the downtown area by themselves independently, because they can. because they can with the technology. And I truly hope that you will consider investing in technology that is not just helpful for those who have a disability, but also is advantageous for the great mass of the citizenry. So thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Okay. Thank you all. We will now move to approval of the consent agenda. Mr. Beedenbow, will you please read the titles of the items on the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. We received no comments regarding any of the consent agenda items by the deadlines. The two items on the consent agenda this evening are an ordinance authorizing the city of Aiken to grant an easement to Dominion Energy, South Carolina Incorporated, and a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a deed of dedication for the reserve at Hollow Creek, Woodside, Phase Four, Section 10-C.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this?
Madam Mayor, I move that we pass the grant easement and the deed of dedication is outlined by our city manager.
Thank you. Do I have a second? That was Councilwoman Broll.
I second.
A second from Councilwoman Diggs. Since the consent agenda does not have, does not have to have comment, we'll go straight to a vote. All those in favor, please. It's unanimous. Thank you. We now have approval and discussion of appointees to various city boards, committees, and commissions. Mr. Beedenbow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In council, we have the following for consideration. The reappointment of John McMichael to the Design Review Board, John Carmen to the Energy and Environmental Committee, and Douglas Cusick to the General Aviation Commission, and the appointment of Elijah Alford to the Recreation Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept these nominations? Councilwoman Price made the motion and a second from?
A second.
Second from Councilwoman Morgan. Comments from the public? Comments from council? All those in favor? Motion's passed. Are there any nominations to consider at our next meeting?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a recommendation to, recommend Jacob Ellis to the Tax Accommodation Committee.
Thank you. Are there any others?
Also like to make one more recommendation will be Mr. Jim Horch to the Building Code of Appeals.
Thank you. The next item under Old Business is second reading and public hearing of an ordinance to adjust the 2025-2026 budget to include allocation of C funds for road paving projects. Mr. Beedenbow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance amending the budget of the city of Aiken for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30, 2026, for the Road Maintenance Fund. These funds were, we receive allocated annually so-called C funds from the Department of Transportation that goes through the County Transportation Committee that are allocated for local road projects. We have allocated, or recommending allocating this amount of $292,740 for roads that will be paved, including we've paved Governor's Lane. That, that was a project that was due to be paved last year, but because of the hurricane, we were unable to pave it until earlier this year. But also Ascot Drive, Spencer Road, Reed Drive, Jehasi Drive, Northland Boulevard, Whitehall Place. And this does require a budget adjustment and is before council for second reading this evening. Council heard it and approved it at first reading on November the 10th.
Thank you so much. Is there a motion to accept this? Councilwoman Price made the motion.
I second, Madam Mayor.
Second from Councilwoman Broll. Are there any comments from the public? Comments from council?
I do want to comment, Madam Mayor, on Governor's Lane, which is in the district that I represent. We have, and Stewart is aware of this because we've had several conversations and several meetings with the residents in that area. And indeed, they have been extremely patient with the city. There were multiple, multitude of things occurring that we had to postpone, postpone, postpone. And the last postponement took place when we had Hurricane Helene. And they were expecting the road pavement then. And we had to change it because of, you know what happened with the destruction of many, many of our areas with trees, et cetera. And we finally got to them August of this year. And they wanted to see Stewart and I in that area. And I wasn't sure whether it was something else occurring that we should know about. And the purpose of them asking us to come to that area was to thank us. And I'm thinking, thank us? We, we didn't get to it as fast as we wanted to. But they were so pleased with the results and waiting that it really meant something very special to the both of us in terms of their patience, not complaining over and over, and being delayed. And we didn't cause the delay, it was by nature and other things occurring. So those are the kinds of things that you receive in a very, very positive way. You don't know, you don't want these to occur, but incidents take place that we can't control. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your comment. All those in favor? There are no more comments? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. We now move to new business. We have one item, and it is an ordinance to rezone two parcels in the block surrounded by Richland Avenue East, Marlborough Street Northeast, Orangeburg Street Northeast, and Barnwell Avenue Northeast from Light Industrial to Downtown Business. Mr. Beedenbow?
Thank you. It is an ordinance to rezone property located at Richland Avenue East, Marlborough Street Northeast, Orangeburg Street Northeast, and Barnwell Avenue Northeast from LI Light Industrial to DB Downtown Business. The applicant and owners requesting that the two parcels be rezoned to Downtown Business. These are within the old Aiken overlay and if rezoned, would remain in the overlay. The zoning ordinance describes Downtown Business as follows. That the district provides for the central commercial and civic functions in a city in a compact area, offering maximum convenience. Although activities are intended to be walking scale, they serve the entire community with an integration of retail, service, entertainment, government, and residential uses encouraged. The Downtown Business, until several years ago, the eastern edge of the boundary was Union Street. Council rezoned it, or excuse me, amended the zoning ordinance to extend the Downtown Business zoning boundaries to Williamsburg Street, where the farmer's market is. It encompassed the farmer's market. There was, within the last year, a subsequent extension of several parcels just to the east of the farmer's market at the southeast corner of Williamsburg and Richland to encompass property the city own that is tentatively planned to be Market Side Village. And this rezoning is contiguous to that parcel. And the comprehensive use designates the property as undeveloped. The zoning is a mix of things from GB to LI to RML to the DB, as I described earlier. Light Industrial allows certain types of development, but this DB zoning would allow for additional commercial uses such as retail and office uses, but would restrict vehicular, industrial, and equestrian uses. It does fit the definition of DB. It has water and sanitary sewer service available. And the, those present at the Planning Commission at their November 12th meeting unanimously voted to rezone the property from Light Industrial to Downtown Business. And that is the recommendation to council. And it is for your consideration this evening, Madam Mayor and council.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this?
Madam Mayor, I so move that we rezone these two parcels.
Councilwoman Broll made the motion and a second?
I second. These are in my district. I definitely want it to happen.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Diggs. Any comments from the public? How are you?
Hello, Madam Mayor. Councilmen and women, congratulations on another four years new, for the new incoming council members. Congratulations on your successful campaigns. I'm Katie Naranjo. I, my father and I, David Sacks, who's also here in the crowd, are partners in Caradasa LLC. We're at 237 Park Avenue, and we are the owners and developers of this site. So I just wanted to let you know we were here. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have or any, anything the audience might have as it relates to this rezoning.
Thank you. We're excited about the plans that you have for that area. Thank you for choosing it.
Any other comments from, any comments from council? We're going to vote on this. All those in favor? Do you have a question? It's unanimous? Thank you. Now we move on to petitions and requests. We have one item, and it is approval to award a contract to Greenview Landscaping Incorporated and allocate capital project sales tax three funds for Citizen Park One irrigation replacement. Mr. Beedenbow?
Thank you. We do need to replace the irrigation system at CP, or Citizens Park Complex Number One. Publicly advertised bid. We received a single bid for $176,729 from Greenview Landscaping Incorporated. We included in the budget ordinance $95,000 for this work that was approved September 22nd and recommend the balance of $81,729 from Capital Project Sales Tax Three Funds to cover the remaining balance. It is before council for consideration this evening.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept this?
I so move.
Councilwoman Diggs made the motion.
And I'll second, Madam Mayor.
Second from Councilwoman Broll. Any comments from the public? Comments from council?
I, I have a question.
I'm sorry. Yes.
To our city manager, we only solicited to one.
No, it was a publicly advertised bids. No, given the dollar amount, we had to do publicly advertised sealed bids.
Okay.
Any other comments from? Yes.
I guess the question for Stewart, why the difference in cost from the original cost estimate to the actual added to it?
I'm going to ask the Parks Recreation and Tourism Director to come and speak to that. Councilman Messina?
Good evening and welcome. So again, when we put our budget estimates in, we're a year in advance. So we're doing like estimates now for next year. And this was actually budgeted two years ago. The project was unable to move forward back in 2024. So we requested funding get put into carry forward, which is, was the amount that was provided in 2024. So $95,000 at that rate is what it was. We really weren't quite sure what the bids would come back as. That was a best, I guess, faith estimate when we first talked to a contractor in 2024. And I think just the prices have gone up and that's, you know, what it came in at.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Ms. Beedenbow.
Thank you, Jessica.
Any other comments from council? All those in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. We will now open the floor to public comments on non-agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and for a total of 30 minutes. Okay, we'll now move on, since no one seems to want to do that. Are there any items from the city manager this evening, Mr. Beedenbow?
Yes, I would like to note, city offices will be closed Thursday and Friday in observance of Thanksgiving. We have our Christmas tree lighting a week from Thursday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM at our, our annual downtown tree lighting in the Newberry Street Festival Center. As we did, started last year, we're going to have three trees lit. A artificial tree at the intersection of Lawrence and Richland, a live tree in the Teague Parkway, which is the parkway between, on the 200 blocks southwest of Park Avenue, between Lawrence Street and Newberry Street, and our Las Vegas-style tree in the festival center. Also, I want to acknowledge, I had the privilege 10 days ago of attending the chief Berencos wearing in as a very prestigious honor. He will be the 2026 President of the South Carolina Law Enforcement Officers Association. Congratulate the chief. That is a very prestigious honor, and we are, he is to be commended.
Thank you so much. We now have an executive session. The executive session notice reads as follows. On Monday, November 24th, 2025, the Aiken City Council will go into executive session after the regular meeting pursuant to Section 30-4-70, Princess A, Princess II, to receive legal advice where the legal advice relates to a pending, threatened, or potential claim or other matters covered by the attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of the public agency in other adversary situations involving, involving the assertion against the agency of a claim. Number one, specifically, the city council will receive a legal briefing regarding Blake et al. versus the city of Aiken. And number two, specifically, the city council will receive a legal briefing related to Boswick versus the city of Aiken. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Councilwoman Price and a second from Councilwoman Diggs. All those in favor? We will now move into executive session in room 315. Thank you.
Did you do that good to hold it?
Playing.
Did you ask for a motion?
Is there a mo— Councilwoman Price made the motion?
It's Barbara.
No, I made it.
Councilwoman Morgan made the motion to come out of—
Executive session.
Of executive session.
And I need a second, please.
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Broll. Now we need a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
Go ahead, Brett.
There a motion to adjourn the regular meeting?
Yes. So, and no official action was—
No official action was taken in executive session. Thank you. Now I need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Councilwoman Broll moves to— and we need a second.